Good evening. I'll call this meeting for the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners to order and we will start with a moment of silence. Thank you. You can stand Commissioner Farrell, you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You don't have to stand.
Oh, absolutely. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your brother for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have the agenda before us. There is a revision from two thirty this afternoon with some minor moves on it. Are there any changes to the agenda or the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Farrell, is there a second?
Second.
Everybody, Commissioner Bonnetts will say second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seven.
Thank you Mayor Pro Tim Baldwin. Second Commissioner Bonnetts, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna start with an action item this evening, which is an appointment for the ABC Board Alcohol Beverage Control. So there's a few applicants, I believe. Is there any discussion?
I think Jamie Fioco has done a great job. And we should continue to support her, just like she's supporting us.
Agree. Make a motion.
I would like a motion to make a motion to appoint Jamie Fioco with the term ending of December thirty first, two thousand and twenty twenty eight.
Thank you. Commissioner Vos, second?
Second. I have a stipulation. Can you do that?
Commissioner Farrell, second, discussion?
Discussion, I know it's Jamie's birthday today. And the stipulation is that she's taken out to her favorite restaurant tonight and wined and dined like she deserves.
We'll leave that out of the motion. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Uh, yes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now Jamie, if you could come do the ABC Financial Report.
Thanks for your flexibility this evening. And yes, I'll do my best to raise more money for town of Pittsburgh through dining and what have you. Just wanted to thank you for your continued support. You have the financials from ending end of December, which, you know, continues to show great growth. We are one of the fastest growing by gross revenue boards in the state, which is really exciting. But we're also keeping our profit margins strong and healthy, which we're very proud of. So I feel like we've got a great board. Everyone's engaged and, you know, involved. We expect the, um, the second location at Northwoods Landing. It's under construction now. We hope to have a sign up soon, but we expect that to be operational by late March or early April. We have until June until we have to pay rent, but we expect it to be open far sooner than that. And finally, I just want to point out that the second quarter distributions that we just sent to the town and to law enforcement and to alcohol education are the biggest, um, are the biggest quarterly, quarterly distributions, not the biggest working capital distributions that we've ever been able to give the town. So as we grow, we're able to send more money the town's way and I'm grateful for your support. Any questions?
Question.
Don't have any questions, just thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. It's, it's a good, it's a good team and I'm very happy to continue working with everyone. So thanks.
Pass that on to the manager also, the manager.
Yeah, Scott just had new surgery, so otherwise he'd be here today, but yeah, he's, we're very happy with him, so.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for your flexibility.
Thank you.
All right, are there any questions on the town quarterly financials? Okay. Up next, we have a proclamation of Black History Month, two thousand and twenty five. I'll read this. It's a proclamation to recognize February two thousand and twenty five as Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month was formally adopted in nineteen seventy six to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout our American experience. And whereas the history of people of African heritage goes back tens of thousands of years and includes some of the greatest and most advanced and innovative societies in the history of human experience. And whereas African Americans have played a significant role in the history of the United States from the early days of the pioneers to our present day leaders in such industries as aerospace, finance, government and international trade. And whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the rich history and teachings of African Americans and bear witness to the progress, beauty and achievements they've made throughout society. Now therefore I, Kyle Ship, Mayor of the Town of Pittsburgh, North Carolina, and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim February two thousand and twenty five is Black History Month. We encourage a celebration of African Americans collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures and traditions and participations in community events honoring their contributions. And that's adopted this tenth day of February, twenty twenty five. Thank you. Okay, up next, manager updates. Jonathan?
Mayor, I don't have anything tonight, so I'm gonna turn it over to Colby Sawyer to talk about what the litigation department. Good evening, I promise I'll keep this short, no more than about an hour. First off, Mayor Commissioners, thank y'all. Thank you for continued support of, of communication here in the town. Before we begin, just a fun fact. Pew in two thousand and twenty three determined through some of their research methods that eighty-two percent of US adults prefer to receive their news and information from either web based sources or social media. Now, only about four percent of US adults prefer to get their news from the newspaper. I take offense to that because I still actually really enjoy reading a newspaper, but we'll leave that one as we go. So my name is Colby Sawyer, Director of Communications and Emergency Management here at the town. We're gonna have a few topics we wanna cover. If you have any questions as we're going, please feel free just to stop me. I'm happy to answer them and also held some space at the end in case you have any questions. So just a few things to cover this evening. A little bit of the background of the department, how we got to where we are today, some of our goals for the department. Taking a deeper dive into our metrics and the results that we're seeing from the work that we're doing. Talk you through just a little bit about projects we've recently completed or are right there at completing. And then want you to know what else is on the horizon as we've got coming forward. So the Communications Department is now officially a staff of two. We have myself and Caitlin Murphy, who's been with us since October. I don't know if she was ever formally introduced to the board, but this is Caitlin Murphy, our Communication Specialist. She has done wonderful things since she's been here and, uh, and I think you're gonna see that in some of our data as we move forward. So a little bit of background about how we got here. Communications and Emergency Management was a new position in the town in two thousand and twenty two. As many of you recall or in our public recalls, we had a lot going on a few years ago. We still do, but we especially had water contamination issues, serious wastewater capacity issues. And we had the level of growth that was really starting to kick off and we were really seeing those, those high growth totals. So there was a lot of information that needed to be communicated. And we went right to work on that, started increasing our website presence, started increasing our social media. We kept that going until two thousand and twenty four, when we expanded Communications and Emergency Management to a full department. And then of course, y'all created the Communication Specialist this past fall. Again, thank y'alls for your support. So we really have four goals. They're here, I'll let you read them if you want to, but ultimately it comes down to developing strategies. Ensure our residents and our stakeholders receive information about the town, maintaining those open lines of communication between the government and the public, the public and the government. Utilizing any tool or platform that we can to, to broaden our communication reach. And then of course, to create those opportunities for residents to participate in the decision making process. Of course, we are buying up people. And so any opportunity we have to invite the public into the decision making processes is just wonderful. Prime examples are Community Budget Survey, which is still live on the website, by the way, PittsburghNC.gov/engage. That is live till the end of the month. We would really appreciate if y'all helped us amplify the message and make sure we get that, uh, some good responses there. Um, and our, so Community Service Feedback Form, let us know how we're doing, let us know how we can do better. All of those options are inviting the public in to, to the government. So taking those goals and working through them, we have seen really good results. So I'm not gonna go again through all these numbers. I'm happy to answer specific questions, but, uh, starting with our website before we get into social media. The number you see in the left column were how many subscribers we had at the end of the first fiscal year. Once we went to our new website that actually had some interactive features. What you see on the right is where we were at as of two Mondays ago, um, data. So as you can see, we've had significant, significant growth in the number of people who are receiving news about the town. And these are all individual subscribers. On our Agenda Center, of course, uh, like I said, as the government of and by the people. We want our public to be able to know what we're discussing, what y'all are discussing, all of our various boards and advisory boards. So we publish our, our agendas and minutes in our Agenda Center. Left to right again is the end of fiscal year twenty two, current being the far right as of two Mondays ago. How many people we have subscribed to receive your agendas? When they're uploaded on the website, the public gets them just about the same time that you do. A few other categories on our websites that the public may not be aware of is the ability to sign up to receive bid opportunities. Sign up for various types of calendar events and then sign up for information about various jobs. So as you can see, we've seen significant growth there, especially in jobs. What's really cool about these numbers is fiscal year twenty three, twenty four and the current do not include any people who were signed up for jobs in the water sewer departments in our old utility department. So those numbers were reflected in the first two, not in the second. So even though we removed an entire department's worth of, uh, subscribers, we still grew at the rate that we did, which I think shows that people want to be, wanting to be here at the town. And then our post, so, uh, more regular posting, more frequent posting, it drives your, your views up higher. It increases your engagement. We've been doing a really good job of that. Caitlin has been hitting it hard on social media. As you can see, there's a little asterix next to fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Facebook does not, Meta's data analytics do not let me go all the way back past, uh, the January first of two thousand and twenty two for some reason. So we had five social media posts, uh, for the second half of that fiscal year. I used to have a contact I could get up with at Meta and get some help when I had a problem, but I don't have that contact anymore. So now I just have to make do. So as you can see, last fiscal year, we had ninety nine, we're already at ninety two. We're halfway through the fiscal year, give or take. So we're doing a lot with social media. And that posting is working. So do not, please do not ask me to describe how they calculate reach. I think it involves calculus and letters and numbers all put together and I was a geometry person. So all I know is the bigger the number, the better. So as you can see, we have continually grown the reach of our social media. And fiscal year to date, we're up over double what we did for the entire fiscal year of last, uh, last fiscal year. Uh, same thing with visits. Again, there's some, some data not available, uh, for twenty two, twenty three or before. But you can see our new followers are increasing as well. So if we keep up with our trends, we will probably, probably triple or quadruple our reach, double our visits and double our new follows from last year, which set at about seventy one hundred. I just realized that I didn't put that data point on there. We're sitting at about seventy one hundred followers on Facebook. And then our YouTube. So these are the number of views that we've received on our videos on YouTube. So as you can see, there was some video in twenty two or twenty three that had a lot of views and a lot of interest. I'm not entirely sure what it was, but that is what, uh, Google told me the metrics were. I ran the report a few times, so I do choose to trust Google in this regard. Another interesting fact, however, is, as you know, last year we went to one board meeting a month instead of two. So the number of videos that we were actually streaming to YouTube decreased and our views still significantly increased. And we're on pace probably to be around five thousand views by the end of this fiscal year. And then our other social media pages. Our Parks and Rec has about twenty eight hundred followers. Our Police Department has over twelve thousand followers. Downtown Facebook has over forty seven hundred and their Instagram is sitting at about twenty seven fifty. Those departments, those pages are all administered by their individual departments. So I don't have a, a visibility on the really granular data there, but those numbers have been increasing as well. Any questions about the data? Very good. So some recently completed projects we're pretty proud of. One was last year's State of the Town presentation. We're very excited about how that turned out. We think that was a wonderful event. Hopefully we'll be doing that annually from here on out. You know, it's a really great way to share what the town has done and is doing. That video is up on YouTube. If anybody wishes to see it, they can also view it on our website at PittsburghNC.gov/soTT. Uh, we also beginning last year started sending meeting recaps via email and social media. So anytime you have a meeting the next day, an email is sent out to the chat list, all of our media partners and is put on social media discussing what y'all talked about, what was heard, what was take, what actions were taken, if any. So that the public, not only maybe they forgot to stream, they forgot to come, they couldn't get in for some reason. They have a chance to go back and look and see what actions were taken and know, I wanted to go watch, watch that video. To facilitate making that easier for them, Caitlin has recently completed timestamping our old minutes, our old meetings on YouTube. So now, uh, the public can come back and go to a specific meeting they're interested in. And each topic you will see has a, a chapter where you can click on and get right to that discussion point. So really great things there. And we completed the Engage, PittsburghNC.gov/Engage. Those are all of the opportunities we have to engage, uh, currently with the town. So there's some static ones on there, our PBO one O one, our Customer Service Feedback Form, our Volunteer in Pittsburgh or VIP Program. Those stay up there and then we have some that are continuously changing. So right now the Community Budget Survey is up there. When that is finished, that will come down when we start working on, if we have a master plan coming up or we have any kind of, uh, project work where we're soliciting a lot of public feedback, then that type of information will go up there. And it's just like a seasonal, uh, type of rotating engagement opportunity. So make sure you stay on top of, uh, slash engage and see what options we have. But we're not done. We've got some work in progress as well. I'm gonna talk about the website redesign a little bit further and some other slides, so we'll get to that. But really the change there is about changing the way it looks and the change in the way it works for the users. We're also going through a process right now of optimizing our website. We're looking at how the user uses the website, reducing the complexity and increasing accessibility. So for example, right now, uh, engineering and planning are treated as separate departments. They have their own separate sections of the webpage, but there's a lot of crossover between what happens with planning and engineering. So we are redeveloping those two websites right now to streamline those, bring them together to make them both functional and educational for the public to be able to understand what is happening in these departments and increasing, and decreasing our number of webpages from about thirty down to about twelve, while still being able to increase the amount of information that we're providing. So we're cutting the complexity down. And finally, accessibility, ensuring that everything we have is, um, is, is meeting as many ADA standards as possible. For example, if you're using assistive technology such as screen reader or if you use inverted colors because of a visual acuity problem, our website is being, uh, ensure that we are ADA accessible. All of our pictures and graphs and whatnot are having those descriptions added to them. Civic Rec is how you book things for the Parks and Rec Department. You wanna book a shelter, you wanna come to an event, you wanna book a field, you do that through Civic Rec. They're going through a redesign right now to bring it in line so that it looks like the town's new website does. And of course, social media growth, we are trying to grow our followers and subscribers. That black box down there at the bottom, I was looking for a graphic that really displayed what we were trying to do. I couldn't find one, so I figured just a, a black hole that you throw information into, sounds a lot like social media. So that's what we went with. So new website. Uh, as we get through all these slides, what you see on the top is our old website. What you see on the bottom is the new. I was going to bring up a live version of the website and walk you through it, but I can guarantee we would either have a tech issue, a streaming issue, something would happen, or, um, there's also a concern because, uh, the URL to get to the test webpage is actually public. And we don't want that material public yet until we're finished, uh, proofing everything. So, uh, this is where we're at. Feel free to come by and see me if you want to see the website in detail. So on the top is our old website, on the bottom is the new. Up there at the very top, you'll see that we're brightening it up a little bit. We're bringing the graphics forward, we're increasing the size of the words just a little bit. We're getting rid of the dark greens, we're using those as, uh, highlights and, and impact points. We're getting rid of some of the oranges. We're really trying to focus on these blues, these lighter greens and these whites and grays to make it more visually appealing, look at a little more light, airy and modern. You'll also see that we have brought the search functionality forward so to make it much easier to find what you're looking for. We've also optimized our search functions. So now when you search for documents or materials on the website, instead of getting like three thousand results, you may get three hundred, which I think is a great, a great outcome, especially in finding what you're looking for.
Is it, can you tell us that the nature of that search, is that still something other than a Google search?
It is, it is still, um, it's still right in, uh, with our website. I'm not sure the technology behind it. I know it's a keyword type search, so using any kind of like Boolean search strings is gonna increase your, your, uh, results. News and announcements again, when the screenshot was taken, we only had one news, uh, announcement up. So, uh, it's not a great representation, but as you'll see, we have rounded it. We have, uh, made sure, if you notice on our old website, sometimes the news boxes were different sizes or the pictures were different sizes. We fixed that problem, so now everything is nice and uniform and unique. It's very appealing to the eye. And, um, of course, as always, you can click on the bottom and view all news. Our calendar, again, just lighting it up. So you'll see at the top, that was a solid wall of dark green and some orange and some black and some blue and some white and a whole bunch of stuff going on. Uh, we wanted to lighten that up as well. Because it's in a test form, you can't see, um, what the events would look like right now. But essentially, instead of it just being text over on the side chunked off, you'll actually have the events in boxes that are all the same size. So again, it's much more aesthetically pleasing and much more easier to read on the eye. And then our footer, we just shortened it down. We, instead of reading from top to bottom, we made sure you can read it from left to right, which is a lot easier to read and follow in many cases. And, uh, as part of our redesign, um, we will be going through and taking a hard look at those, at those sections to make sure that what's contained in our footer is, is the information that actually needs to be there. So the way we're doing this website redesign is really in three phases. Phase one is new look. So the new website is actually launching tomorrow. The new look and feel of the website will be live tomorrow. I'm not sure what time I've got to get with the project engineers in the morning and figure out when they're gonna flip the switch, for lack of a better term. Although I think it's really just hitting the enter button. I like to imagine it as being a big switch. Uh, phase two is the new feel. So that is what we're, uh, in the process of, of working through with our optimizing of ensuring that our information is concise. Uh, we don't have a page with a sentence that links to a page with a sentence. You'll have a, a better use of it. And then finally, or a better feel. And then phase three is your new use. So that is when we will have a lot more interactive type content on the website. Uh, you will notice on our website, we have the how do I tab at the top. That is when we will finally finish building out the how do I? So instead of having to go to our website and search for something or dig through a department and hope you get to the right place, just about anything a, a community member would want to do, they would be able to get to from how do I? Without that, that's all I have. If you have any questions. Oh, sorry, one more. There's more. Our interior pages as well, it's not just our homepage. So we've also tried to lighten up our interior pages as well. So you'll see, instead of having a big solid bar of blue and dark colors, uh, green fonts, which can be hard to read, we've actually, uh, lightened everything up inside, made the words a little bit bigger, went to green or blue, uh, title cards to try to make it a little bit easier on the eye. And again, just lightened up those colors a little bit to try to make it a little more light and welcoming. No, I think that's it. Yes. Any questions for Colby?
I have one, Colby. So do you have an idea of, of why random citizen clicks on this page? Is that the number one reason they click on it?
So part of forgive the old data, the last time I had this type of report ran was around the end of summer. Our three biggest pages were planning, parks and rec and, uh, recycling, actually. So, uh, quite a bit there, planning, parks and rec and recycling. Our most frequently downloaded documents were either in planning or actually our most downloaded document of the year was the Parks and Recreation Spring, or Spring Activity Guide.
Okay, so that shows interest, uh, direct interest in doing things downtown or in town.
In town, absolutely. And part of the website optimization includes search engine optimization. So that when you search Google for something, Pittsburgh, with a source that pops up high.
So we can track then how, in general, how the interest of the town is.
By, in a way, we do not have Google Analytics on our website or any type of analytics platform. So digging into the how you go from page to page, we can't do at the moment, but I can tell you what the most frequently visited pages are and the most commonly back downloaded documents and whatnot. But I can tell you what the most frequently visited pages are and the most commonly back downloaded documents and whatnot. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have mayor and commissioner reports. I'll start with mine. We had a ribbon cutting at a tree museum at the plant or the beverage district. So, um, a really interesting thing out there, somewhat symbolic and, uh, also have some native trees that are protected by. Uh, fence so they can start small and, and grow up there. So that was a good event. Also a lot of activity around, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Day, uh, lots of events around town and that, uh, day of service. And then upcoming meetings have, uh, EDC meeting on February nineteenth. And the retreat is coming up for them as well. And the next, uh, Central Pines Regional Planning Organization update meeting is going to be February thirteenth. And I will actually be at the North Carolina Mayor's Association meeting on the twelfth and thirteenth. So, uh, Teresa. Provide the notes. Thanks. Uh, Teresa does a great job representing us to that organization. Um. That is all I have. Mayor Flippin Ball?
Thank you. The Central Regional Pi-. Central Pines Regional Council meeting was held on January twenty second, twenty twenty five. There were several presentations regarding, uh, how from including the legal municipalities. To, to talk about how this, they're going to present recommendations to the state for better support in local funding. And, and trying to have innovations toward and to help the cities and the local municipalities. That was somewhat of a long presentation, so I won't go over all of that, but they were talking about funding sources and those sources hopefully being the state. So, and then, um, they also talked about a local economic development. And hopefully that the state would be able to assist in, in that as well. But of course, we know a lot of times there, those funding type things are approved. As unfunded mandates. So, but that's what they're asking for. So there were great, that was a great presentation. So also there's going to be a regional day, Central Pines Regional Day. And it's primarily for, uh, elected officials, newly elected officials, so they can learn about Central Pines Regional Council. However, others can certainly attend, but the last day that you can register will, is actually today. And it is set for nine o'clock in one to two o'clock PM. At the Central Pines Regional Council Office, which is on Page Road off of I four.
What's it do?
It's on the twenty first. February twenty first, and it starts at nine and over to two. And it's very good because you do learn a lot about what. Central Regional Pines Council does. So again, it's for a lot of times those individuals which are newly elected, but it can be a refresher course. So that's all that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Botts?
Yes, on January twenty third, the Chatham County Climate Change Advisory Committee, uh, met and, um. Kevin Lindley, county staffer, uh. Rebriefed, uh, briefing that he delivered to the Board of Commissioners at their budget retreat on sustainability efforts. And, um. The annual report, uh, was discussed, which had been delivered, uh, to the county commissioners on December sixteenth. And, um, some feedback was gathered from, or discussed from the, uh, county commissioner before you on January seventh. Um, I mentioned that at our last meeting. And, um. The discussion was had about, uh, goals envisioned for the county, uh, for this year. That, that covers it.
Thank you. Commissioner Farrell?
Definitely this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Foley?
I have several things. Uh, I'd like to start out with, uh, a statement that I wrote. On the occasion of Black History Month. And, um, like to share it with everyone. It's about who we've overlooked. I think it's laudable that we as a town are, uh, recognizing our brothers and sisters in the African American community. During Black History Month, and we should never forget that our community and our state and our country has benefited in large part from the labor. And wealth creation of, of slaves and slave trade. These were not independent contractors doing a job, but they were in fact, human beings in bondage, creating wealth and value in our community throughout. Throughout their labor, through their labor. In fact, uh, census records in eighteen sixty indicate that over forty-five-hundred slaves lived in Pittsburgh before the Civil War. That's almost, that's almost as many people that we have here now. And their value as chattel or property was twice as valuable as the Chatham County tax rolls for their owners and the appraised value of their land itself. Uh, their stories needs to be told again and again, so that our citizens and, and the future. Citizens understand how our community was built and, and how to honor the descendants of these men and women in our community. Way back, the, the federal census. Was charged with counting the population of every soul in North Carolina. And it has, and it has done so for every decade since the eighteen hundreds, eighteen hundred exactly, as a matter of fact. They were asked to record names, ages and family relationships for the records throughout our state. Prior to the eighteen seventy census, slaves were counted. But they were never asked about family status, name or gender. They were nameless and they were just a number. According to the federal census in eighteen twenty, forty years prior. Population total in Chatham County was twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-one. At that time, one-third of the population was slaves. That's, uh, about four thousand individuals. The same census indicated that Chatham County had two percent. Of that population, the non-white population were free. So two percent of four thousand is about eighty people. Were Freeman, Freeman, Freeman. In eighteen sixty, the population of rural Chatham County swelled and, uh, uh. And these individuals, these individuals, unnamed individuals, mothers and fathers and sons and daughters were owned by Chatham County residents. The increase in the slave population can be partially explained by a new, uh, by a new then agricultural product, cotton. It was grown readily and cheap in southern states. The cotton was king here in North Carolina, the land of cotton. It was a real thing. Cotton was a poor man's silk. It was coveted throughout Europe. Loose breathable durable, durable cotton was transformed in all manner. Cotton was made into denim for dock workers and military uniforms and canvas made of cotton. For military tents and most importantly, for those great sailing ships across the Atlantic Ocean. But cotton had a hard, was a hard crop to grow and it's very, and it was very labor intensive to get to market. Farmers and plantation owners found it difficult to harvest and clean that product for market. It was very labor intensive. With cheap labor, their profits grew. But with enslaved labor, their profits, profits were spectacular. By eighteen sixty, cotton exports amounted to sixty percent of all United States exports. It can be said that the value of the cotton commodity rivaled current value of crude oil in today's world. Slavery significantly augmented the wealth of the southern plantation owners. To satisfy market demands, many plantations expanded by buying. And added, and adding land and, and enslaved people. Due to a scarcity of southern banks, plantations sought, sought loans from northern banks. Northern banks endorsed loans to southern plantation owners. Often using enslaved individuals as collateral. Financial institutions often favored using slaves for mortgages over land mortgages. We were, we were mortgaging human beings, the northwards and the southwards. Cotton and similar agricultural products have, have brought great wealth to our state. A considerable amount of that wealth was born on the unpaid backs of slaves. As part of Black History Month, these unnamed souls of our dark past. Are to be recognized for their indescribable sacrifice and pain. This correct historical data. Uh, and all Chatham, Chatham County funded educational entities must provide accurate accounting for the extraordinary burden that these unnamed people experienced. Next topic. That was a heavy one. The next topic, I talked such lightly last month about having us as a group of commissioners. Petition the county commissioners. To support a bond referendum, present a bond referendum. To purchase land that is going to be used up by developers, whoever. I'd love to see us reserve some land like other municipalities have done, Sanford's done it. Uh, everybody's doing it. We should be thinking about it. We should encourage the county to do so. So I would love to. Ask the staff to bank, to, to talk about it this upcoming month, put it on the agenda for a vote. Uh, I'd love to hear some pros and cons from the staff and see what, how they consider, uh, a proposal to the county. For very, that very thing, a bond proposal for purchasing land for free space for parks and rec. One more thing and I'll let you guys go. And that is a real estate report. For Pittsburgh, the town of Pittsburgh. This is for January numbers. The first thing on this report that I'm reading says it is a seller's market. Not a balanced market or a buyer's market. You can tell the difference between a seller's market, buyer's market. Or a balanced market by the days, uh. By the median days on, uh, that are listed. So the longer the listing, the closer it is to a buyer's market. A seller's market, you sell it like that. So the medium sold price in, and, uh, for single family homes, condos, townhouses and apartments. In the Pittsburgh market in the month of July, it was six hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. The, uh. Monthly change, the twelve monthly, twelve month change is three percent. There are other stats here. I'll, I'll give this to the, the clerk if, if, uh, anybody's interested. I can post this. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Vos?
On January twenty third, I attended an ABC board meeting and I will reiterate what Jamie Thioco said earlier. Twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That's what they contributed to the town in this last quarter's distribution check. And I think that's pretty fantastic. I also went to a downtown advisory board meeting on the fourth and nothing to report from that.
Thank you. Okay. Up next is public comment. We don't have anyone signed up this evening. And so after that, we have a, uh, presentation on the Louis Freeman Park.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, I'm very pleased to join you all tonight. It seems very apropos that I'm coming to talk to you this evening about the Louis Freeman Park. To provide an update for you all, um, during Black History Month. I will start off by, um. First introducing myself. I'm Siobhan Moore with Hobbs Architects. And we've been tasked by the town to design, to further the previous designs that had been, uh, worked on for the Louis Freeman Park. And, um, I thought I'd start off this evening, uh, just kind of giving you a little bit of history about Mr. Louis Freeman. So, um, we do have a bit of a presentation, but before we get to that, um. So Mr. Louis Freeman, he was born in the late seventeen hundreds and he was an enslaved person. Who secured his freedom of some means. We're not entirely sure how. Um, but he managed to secure his freedom and went on to become a very prominent business owner and landowner in downtown Pittsburgh. So I think he had owned upwards of nineteen different parcels of land in downtown. Uh, one of which was his home, um, where he established his home. And this was all during pre-Civil War times. Um, so what is pretty significant about that first, that he was able to become such a prominent business person. But he was also able to secure the freedom of his family. So his wife and his son, he secured their freedom out of slavery. And then went on to build his home. So his home was built circa eighteen eleven. And is now, um, it still stands today. It's part of our office, Office of Hobbs Architects. I actually sit. In his home. That is where my office is. It's a pretty special place to do what we do. Um, the building is, the home is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And that's thanks to the efforts of the previous owner, Mrs. Jane Pyle. Who put a lot of effort into getting the home listed as a, as a historic property. Um, so as you may know. The Louis Freeman House sits adjacent to a piece of property that's to become the Louis Freeman Park. And, um, so we've been asked to design that park. Um, to acknowledge Mr. Freeman's contribution to our community. To document the history and to create a place of reflection and gathering. And so with that, I, we do have some images that I would like to show. Thank you. Um, so we have been working on what I will call a schematic design. Um, to date for the park and a park shelter. And so the top image that you see is our schematic site plan. Um, to orient you, north is facing to your left. And, um, the, the piece of property that we're talking about is. Uh, not far off of Salisbury Street, uh, West Salisbury, yeah, West Salisbury Street. And, but off of, uh, Rectory Street. So it borders a home to the north. And then Chatham County property to the south. And then to the top of the page is where the Louis Freeman House sits within, uh, um. Larger building that is our offices. Um. A lot of people are, they come to visit our office and they want to see the Louis Freeman House. You cannot really see it from the outside. A lot of people think that the, um. That the timber structure in the back of our property is the Louis Freeman House and it is not. Um, that was a, uh, old farm building, tobacco barn that actually sat on the property that. Is going to become the Louis Freeman Park for a while. Um, it was relocated from a farm in Snow Camp. Um, when we purchased the property from Jane Pyle several years back, we relocated that structure to our property, but that is. While historic, it is not the Louis Freeman House. The Louis Freeman House you can see from the exterior today is the stone fireplace. That still stands. So if you were looking at that building, you can see the stone fireplace very clearly. Um, but the rest of the home is enveloped by future additions. So. We thought that what would be very nice to do with this park shelter that we're designing is to. Orient people to what Mr. Freeman's home would have been like at the time that he lived there. It is roughly about sixteen by eighteen feet. He had his family of five. We know of at least a family of five who lived there, um, during one of the censuses that was taken. Um, so we are, have been looking at how we can position a shelter of roughly that size. On the site, um, Robert, the creek runs through, I think that's the Robinson Creek that runs through the site, um, to the north. And often will flood its banks, um, only occasionally dramatically. But, um, so we want to be sure to try to locate the shelter outside of that flood area or flood prone area. Um, and then, and also work with the existing trees. There's very large trees, um, throughout that site. To the south, there's a really lovely stand of bamboo that is just very, very dense. It forms a really pretty natural boundary. Um, and so we're looking at all of those elements, um, when we place the. And so we're looking at all of those elements when we place the shelter. What you see here is a conceptual site plan though, because we are still needing to get a survey of the site. So we found out this week that while we have secured donations of design services and materials. For the shelter that the person who had volunteered his time to survey had to rescind the offer. So we are pursuing another surveyor to do the minimal amount of surveying that we need, which is topography and. The tree locations and such. So this is where we think the shelter would want to go. Generally, it would go there. Which is in the southeast corner of the site. And other components to the park that we think can be accomplished with the budget that we have. Are, are some pathways, a lawn that would be used for gathering. Some park benches, some picnic tables, some signage that would be important to. You know, tell people why they're there, why this place is important. And perhaps some fencing too, along the east side to kind of keep the boundaries of the park defined. One thing we know we do need to do is provide handicap parking. And so we've looked at a variety of options for doing that. This shows one, the, like I said, the property to the south is currently Chatham County property. And so if they were in agreement, we thought that is actually to the south is the most accessible route. To the park. Along Rectory Street, there's quite a bit of grade change. There would need to be a lot of stabilization along Rectory Street to put an accessible parking space. And so. To do so to the south would, because there's already a drive there. Would actually be a pretty easy thing to accomplish, we think. So then having a path through the bamboo to the park is one way we could accomplish a handicap parking space. So then if you look to the bottom of the image, the shelter itself, we envision it being constructed in a very similar manner. To the original Louis Freeman Home. So the footprint would be, like I said, in this, in the size of Mr. Freeman's home. Within the, let's say that the concrete pad of the shelter, we could. Establish what might look like the foundations of the home and give an imprint of where the cook. The cooking fireplace is, which is still standing and meets behind where I said the day. And we see that it being able to use for picnics, having some sort of seating in there. If we could afford to do it, we'll explore maybe having a low stone wall that allows for some additional seating. The wood, the, the construction would be wood framed. And we have some very interested parties in providing those materials for, for free to the town. So we're really trying to get as much as we can for the funds that the town has coming and. But we see that this could be a multi-phase project, you know, there's definitely some. Future stabilization that could happen along Rectory Street. There could be some additional exhibits put along the trails. It's not a very large space, but it's a very calming space if you've walked through there. It's really, it's a really lovely, a lot of old growth trees, black walnuts. And there's the possibility for a path connection to the east that would actually allow visitors to kind of walk past the visitor. The visible portions of the Mr. Freeman's home. That does require walking onto the adjacent property and crossing the street to get access to, or it's not the street, crossing the stream. To get access to Salisbury Street. So that would have to be worked out in the future, but. It's a really special place and we're very, very honored to be part of working on it with you. I do have one more image. It's just a 3D, quick 3D rendering that we did. That's our actual pictures of the bamboo behind the, behind the rendered structure. But it just gives you a sense of kind of the scale of what we're trying to accomplish. And we come tonight to hear your thoughts and if we're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
So much, Siobhan. Do you think that your, your current concept would allow for preservation of the existing trees?
That is one of our primary goals. So when we have those located. We, we can walk the site now and say this feels about right for where it would go, and that's what we're showing on the plan, but we'll know. We'll know for sure. We will try very hard, especially the much larger old growth trees. We do think it's possible.
Stand of bamboo is so dense and such a. You know, it really is a wall. And so I admire and I'm grateful for the vision of cutting through that for handicap accessible parking in the adjacent lot. That's a great idea. And I hope the county will be willing.
Thank you.
Are you coordinating with any historical?
Yes.
Can you fill us in exactly?
So the Chatham County Historical Association has been very involved in the discussions about this. Particular project as well as Ms. Mary Nettles has been very involved in these discussions as well. On behalf of the NAACP. And so there's a lot of interest from those organizations to assist in whatever way they can. Either providing some of the historical documentation that's going to be part of the exhibits, helping to fundraise. So we've, there's a very strong interest in seeing this happen from those organizations beyond. And so one of the things that we're, we will be challenged with, and there may be a very simple answer to this, but the. Securing these donated materials, the, both of these entities have. Folks and organizations that want to donate materials. And so it's just having a. Some sort of structure through which they could donate those materials to the town. I know that's possible, but we just have to work with the town to see how to do that best and in a way that. There's some kind of tax implications for that, but. Yeah, everyone that we have spoken to has been very excited. So. Grinsley Hobbs in our office has really taken the charge of reaching out to those organizations and also speaking to the descendants. Of Mr. Louis Freeman, who some are still alive. One thing I didn't note earlier is that his descendants have made very significant contributions, not just to our community. But well beyond to the United States. So one of them was the first black dentist in the United States.
Harvard, Freeman Harvard.
So it's, it's quite impressive.
And, and not to interrupt you, I apologize, but his great, great, Mr. Freeman's great, great, great grandson. Is a doctor, is an oncologist. He's ninety-three years old now.
Yeah, he's, he's definitely getting there. He's seen these point, he's seen these, he's very excited about them. So we, we do hope that we can have him attend or that would be really lovely, a grand opening, but. He has been involved in these discussions about the potential for that.
I saw a speech that he, he wrote, spoke to the NAACP and. He has the same type of courage that Louis Freeman probably had. I can't imagine, being the two percent that I spoke of earlier, two percent of the non-white population. And he was a free man, but I wonder how comfortable he was on horseback if he went to. Chattanooga or Charleston. So I admire his courage and the way he maneuvered his, his life in a way that he still found peace and power. So power to him.
There is quite a bit of information on him and I do recommend to anybody who's interested in knowing more. You're welcome to reach out to our office. We could point you in the right direction. We've been gathering information. Really since, since purchasing the property several years ago. But Jane Pyle had also gathered much of that information too, in order to secure the historic designation. And so. We continue to seek for more. There's an active search to try to find where he might have been buried. And it goes on, you know, trying to learn more about him and his family.
Actually, the Chatham Record did a great article about Mr. Louis Freeman. And it gives great detail if anyone wants to read that. And his descendants, from my understanding, are very interested when they, when this is open. Or at the grand open, they're very interested in attending that. So thank you all very much for doing that. And really, there were more Freeman than Mr. Louis Freeman in Pittsburgh.
And it would be a good opportunity to, to note that, that part of our history.
Wonderful education for our town. Thank you.
Okay, up next, we have a public hearing. This is on the revisions to the Chatham Park Affordable Housing Additional Element. So I'll take a motion to go into public hearing. Commissioner Foley, a second?
Second.
Commissioner votes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to point out one minor change in the introduction. The initial draft said each article of this element is divided into two articles. So we missed that. We simply changed that to this element is divided into two articles. So nothing major there. Other major changes, Affordable Housing Unit of Apartment is triggered as CO in new version rather than flat of lots. We hope that this will help with the goal of spreading the units across the community rather than making it clustered. No restriction on the units that are hundred and twenty percent AMI and no incentive. Fifteen-year restriction on eight percent AMI units, and that's a five thousand dollar incentive. And then thirty-year restriction on sixty percent AMI units, and that's at a ten thousand dollars. Chatham Park has also agreed to build a greenway up to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to include design. For Habitat for Humanities Project off of Tumor Loop. And for that, they will receive a credit of fifty-two multifamily units towards the account, and that is in the eighty percent range. And an important note here, those units will be single-family, but Chatham Park will be getting multifamily credit. So we think that's a win. And the overall savings to the town, just in that paragraph, is nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. I think that's a point, a good point to make. The town has one year to pay the incentives funding for unit counts, though. So that's, that's a new language that was added. Essentially, Chatham Park wanted something. For us to show that we were going to pay our bill. And I think we even have enough, the runway from when they come into pre-scoping to when the units have COs. Should be anywhere from two to three years. So we'll have plenty of time to plan to make those payments. So I have no issue with that. Some legal changes, the sixty percent AMI units are now at twenty percent of the overall number. Twenty percent. The sixty percent units, you're required to do twenty percent at that level. Or I want to say federal law, maybe state. In order for towns to provide incentives or to participate financially. So we're able to get that number went from fifteen percent of the settlement units to twenty percent. So I think that's a win. Chatham Park wants to show the impact of public funding through redacted settlement statements. That is essentially Chatham Park to get a lot of these to work. They're going to have to donate the land or sell it at a reduced cost. So that land donation value or that reduced cost will be shown in the redacted settlement statements so that we can show. That the money nearby is going towards the public. Then financial changes, the additional financial liability for the town was approximately eight million dollars. This was post-merger. This is when STFs were around five grand. Due to the STF fees with the merger, that liability ballooned to over twenty-five million dollars. A number that the town cannot afford. Through this agreement, that is reduced to roughly five million dollars. That's my intention.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for the board?
Yes, and I'm not quite sure how to, how to formalize it, but. I'll first just start that I am very grateful and very impressed with the very significant improvements that have been made to this document. I didn't, I didn't hide the fact that I opposed it. At many steps of, of the way historically. I felt that we were not getting a good deal for the public. And. I'm not going to belabor that. But for this current review, I felt that it was most important to focus on the. Density credits aspects of this document. And. My understanding of it. It's, it's actually, in some ways, I think it's a little bit more confusing than it was originally, but. For the public's benefit, I'll just want to explain it as I understand it. That the Chatham Park investors will receive a unit of density credit for additional housing units. For each affordable housing unit that they build. And that the total of those density credits could be as high as eight to one. If certain provisions are met. And those provisions are that the affordable housing units need to be in proximity to. Grocery store. Where fresh vegetables or frozen vegetables are sold. Proximity to a public school. And proximity to a transit stop. And in looking at the map for the remaining acreage, the South Village, it seems really feasible to me. To have affordable housing units within one mile of a boundary of. Many of the tracks in the South Village. But the language is a little bit even more permissive that. This proximity for, for grocery stores, for public school, for. Transit stop. Or for an employment center. Can be in proximity, not to the boundary of the lot, but in proximity to the project. Project is a capital P, project. So this is a, this is a key word, and I think we need to understand the definition of this, this concept. The project is land included in a subdivision plan. It's, this is the definition from the text. Land included in a subdivision plan or site plan approved by the town. Provided however, where the approved subdivision plan or site plan is for a phase or a proposed development project. The word project means the land that includes all proposed phases. So as I understand this. The deal that was wrought with Disney and DMB for the North Village, a very large assignment of land, fifteen hundred acres basically, just short, short of that, fourteen some odd acres. A similar deal, we're, we're told is coming for the South Village, a very large transfer. A very large project, very large buyer. And it seems to me that that is a project. That's my understanding of it. And I would like to be corrected or disabused of that. And I would like to be corrected or disabused of that if it's a misunderstanding. But I believe that if Chatham Park Investors sells a large extent of this 5,000 acres in the South Village, that that would be considered a project. And it's really easy to find a lot of locations within, either within those 5,000 acres or within a mile of the boundaries of that project. So I have great confidence that they will achieve these three, at least three of these marks. Proximity to grocery, proximity to public schools, and proximity to transit stop. Employment center seems challenging, but I'm not worried about that. I think it's really clear that they're going to get their eight units of, of density. Or that it's achievable. And so then we have to think about what's, what's the math? What's the resulting math going to be? And my understanding is that eight times 1,650 is 13,200. Which is more than half of their current 22,000 residential unit title. So Chatham Park, all, as I've been understanding and as the public's been understanding, is a 22,000 unit residential project. And this density bonus gives them an additional 13,200 units. And moreover, those additional units are excluded from the affordable housing requirement. So they can build those 13,200 units more, and they don't have to think about, contemplate the seven and a half percent that they're agreeing to. Which effectively means that the original affordable housing commitment is going to be diluted from seven and a half percent down to 4.7%. But I think the more important point here is that we're no longer talking about a 22,000 unit residential project. We're talking about potentially a 35,000 unit residential project. That's a very significant change. And it's not been publicized. It's not been talked about. It's not even very straightforward in the, in the text of this document. And yet it's clear to me that it is, it is possible. And because the language has improved and been refined from the last version, I think it's the intent. So if this were fair, the public ought to get another 9,090 affordable units. So that the overall commitment is still seven and a half percent through the life of the project.
One question. I'm a little confused where you got that number from. The, the eight units, you got to have three of these commitment locations, correct?
Well, they have to check the boxes on each of those three things, yes. And then they get eight units.
Okay. Eight additional.
Eight additional residential.
Where did, where did you get that 3,000, that number you got? Can you go back over that?
Just multiply 1,650, which is their affordable housing commitment.
Right, that's the 7.5. Okay.
And those units, it's stipulated very clearly, those additional units can be built any way they want. We can't tell them how they should be built. We can't ask for those to be extra dense or multi-unit, you know, apartment complexes or, or high rises. They can be built however they want to use them.
Are any staff or applicant to respond?
Yeah, and looking at it from the additional density, I think then, I think from a staff level, we've been hearing for a while, density, more density is, is what we're after. So it, I think if Paul and I were looking through this, for them to be able to get that extra density, didn't seem like it would be an issue. Because it would be putting those units within Chatham Park, just meaning that Chatham Park as a whole would become more dense. Which certainly is, is something that in the past has seemed like something that was desired.
In exchange for free space or affordable housing. Don't forget that part. We want, we want density, but we want it in exchange for affordable housing or free space. No, we just, we just want density in Pittsburgh. There's a big difference.
This doesn't change anything about open space commitments or anything.
Open space, yeah, but we're, we're, in this case, we're, we're talking about affordable housing.
Right, we'd be gaining affordable housing. The trade-off for affordable housing is increased density.
Intensity, yeah, but Commissioner Bonnet was implying that that's not going to happen this way.
Well, there's no assurance of it because we have no, no ability to say how those additional units are, but they could be a whole lot of houses on freestanding, you know, with lawns and, and lots around, very small lots, but they could still do that. And yes, we talk about density a lot. We talk, I think this board has been outspoken about being in favor of density. But there's a difference between density and just numbers of increases. Density is how many units we have on smaller acreages. I think that's desirable. Just having a 60% increase in the population isn't a desirable thing unless we know that it's going to be built with great thought about preserving the landscape, about preserving the view share. And we've had lots and lots of struggles about that through the course of the additional elements. So in my mind, this is a further weakening of all of that. It's a, it's density without much in exchange for. And, you know, if it didn't have this great loophole where those 13,200 units were completely exempt from affordable housing requirements themselves, I, I could be a lot more comfortable with it. But these affordable housing units don't have to have parks associated. And yeah, it's just it's problematic. It is still dramatically improved. And so it's quite challenging for me, and I really didn't know how to bring this up, but I appreciate the board hearing me. And I appreciate the opportunity to articulate my concerns.
And thank you, Commissioner Bonnet, for your, your input. I understand your frustration.
If I'm remembering the requirements correctly from like the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, those distances and things are what like the federal requirements for li-tech housing are, correct? So that we're, we're trying to locate the affordable housing and those things that would qualify for li-tech, which has the other requirements, federal requirements associated with it.
Yes, but that's from the boundary of the lot. That's not from the project. The federal requirements don't give anywhere near that permissive language. This is a dramatic difference from the federal requirements. If you want those units to be subsidized, then yes, they would have to have that proximity to the lot. It's my understanding, but proximity from the project boundary, that's, that's much more lenient, much more permissive.
So I guess let me, what do you think is the differentiation between a project, like a full housing complex and a, a lot, or, or the lot for that complex versus the project?
So practically speaking, they could put one school in the middle of 5,000 acres in the South Village and check the box. They could put one grocery store down there and check the box. Now, the quarter acre proximity requirement for transit stop, I don't have the GIS capability to estimate that, but I still think that transit stops are pretty easy to build and they've expressed a desire to do it for their own reasons. And it's also, I was thinking elsewhere in the master plan, it's required under the transportation element. So, yeah.
So, so I guess one of your concerns is that the definition of project could include something larger if they were to sell it as a whole project, like as a real estate transaction?
Please tell me if I'm wrong.
I don't know if you are, I'm just trying to clarify what the concern.
I think that's right.
The project definition talks about site plan. And then with, under N18, with the, the four different options.
What page are you on, Jonathan? What page are you on?
Page eight of the, of the news.
Just like approximately page 16?
In the PDF? Probably. Yeah, it's page eight on the updated section of January 8th. Or project in which the AHU or WHU is constructed. It's like, for me, that says if they bring in a site plan calling a project, that if that particular unit is located within that project, then it could meet. They could check that box. Let me get some of these. Chatham Park's not going to be submitting a site plan for a grocery store. They're probably going to be submitting a site plan for a shopping center. That's going to have all different elements of that development. So with those specific units in that project, then those will be counted. If anyone from Chatham Park wants to provide some further information.
I'd also point out that this is substantially similar to what the original element had.
Yes, thank you. And I've been trying to point it out from the original. I was nowhere near as confident at that point as now. I thought, surely I must be wrong in this, that an eight unit density bonus is so generous and permissive. But now that I've read it fifth or sixth time, a lot clearer. So.
The density credits are a form of incentive to get Chatham Park to build the affordable units in the first place.
That's right.
In addition to the cash remuneration. So without the density credits or the cash, you wouldn't have seven and a half percent of the units being allocated to affordable housing. It's the quid for the quo. And this is basic, this particular section is what you adopted several years ago.
Yeah.
This is not a change.
No, but it is a refinement.
I didn't notice that instead of just.
Yeah.
On the ball there.
My local gas station, so I'll have frozen vegetables. But the, the, again, the definition of project, the word project means the land that includes all proposed phases. And so tell me if I'm wrong, that the Disney project that's just recently burned presented would not have been defined as, would not mean this definition project.
I don't believe there's going to be any AHUs or WHUs in the Disney project.
Which is, is not addressing the point.
That's the, that's the language that's being used.
Mr. Messi?
The unit has to be in the project.
If there were a 5,000 acre transfer of ownership in the South Village, could that be considered a project?
A project under Section 18, if there are AHUs and WHUs within that 5,000 acres.
Right.
So I don't understand the point.
The point is that, that they are going to meet this eight unit density bonus. This is not a stretch for it.
Project, the land included in a subdivision plan or site plan approved by the town, that's the first sense. That would be the first thing that I would get to.
Yes.
If it's a site plan, subdivision site plan, or a plan that's been approved by the town.
And.
The area would have nine phases, so I don't.
The project means the land that includes all proposed phases.
Yeah, that, that makes it a little confusing. Because all the phases are not being approved. So I would interpret that as saying those phases haven't been approved, so therefore that's not part of the project.
If the word project means the land that includes all proposed phases, it doesn't matter what subdivision plan or site plan is being, is under consideration. The project is what holds the effect.
I, I guess, can we have someone from the applicant say what the intent is here? Anybody?
Well, maybe it's a way to refine it so it can be more understandable.
That's what I was hoping someone would speak, but.
Yeah, if you have concern with that language, if the board as a whole has concern with that language, we just need to get back to Chatham Park and revisit it.
We're close, but we're not there yet.
It is.
I appreciate the support.
It reads a little fine.
It's a big project.
Let's see if they can get that refined and more identified so it can be more understandable. I think that would be better.
Yeah, if we can't clarify it tonight, let's clarify it the next time we meet. Fine with that. Do you want to make a motion, Mr. Bonnet, or I?
I defer to staff on suggestions to what motion to make here.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Can we just table it?
Well, before we do that, we don't, i- is there any other concerns that anybody has with this? Other than the, the definition of project and the associated density, if there are other concerns that anybody has before we go?
Anyone else concerned that if all of these marks are checked and if 13,200 units of density, additional density are accrued by the developers, that those additional units are not subject to any affordable housing. If these circumstances unfold as I think is conceivable, then again, we can have a 35,000 residential unit project, not a 22,000 residential unit project. And at that point, what was nominally a seven and a half percent commitment for affordable And at that point, what was nominally a seven and a half percent commitment for affordable housing is a 4.7% commitment of a full.
Because of that change.
Because of that watering down, because of the dilution of those 60% more units.
I guess a question I have related to that is what is our, we've already approved, I think, four, 500 units? Or, or like within the P D D affordable with Comet and the others, but.
Not approved, but during the process.
Okay. Cause that would be my question of like what, of what's already approved? What applies the element at the time or the revised element?
Financially speaking, the revised.
Say that again.
Financially speaking, the revised.
Okay.
Um, cause legally, in the first amendment, as it's written, we cannot participate financially. So if Chatham Park wants to use the, the old language that's on it, because legally we cannot participate financially. So if they use the new element, we could.
I'm lost in the sauce. That's my answer. I don't know what we're saying anymore.
So it is very confusing.
Yep. In order for a community to participate, you have to have at least 20% of the overall total affordable units at 60%. The original element only had 15% at 60%. So that fact alone means that we cannot participate financially.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I, I thought that's a different direction you were going, but the, the fact that, that the current draft does fix that is a significant improvement. The advocates, as I remember, what was it, three or four years ago, were very much concerned that there was so much of the numbers towards the higher end of affordable. Basically constituting market rate.
Right.
And the lower hand was really needing beef, needing to be beefed up. So I'm very pleased with that. Quite agree with that. There are a lot of positives in the changes that have been made.
Yeah, from a financial standpoint, looking at town, it's very strong document for us.
Yes. Much better. Thank you.
In terms of the added units, as Paul mentioned, that's one of their incentives for creating 1,650 units is they get density credits. But we're happy to go back and clarify this lesson. But it would be nice to know what the goal of that is.
And that's my question is if, if any change needs to go back to attorneys and all that and go through that, or if there's like a clarification we can make this evening, but I'm hearing that we're the applicant, so I don't know what the process is here, but it looks like we're headed towards, you know.
My question is, what would you like to see if?
I'll, I'll be clear. I'd like, like to see an additional 990 minutes associated with those.
Particularly what would you like to see the definition of project be different from what it is now?
Good question.
Specifically related to the subdivision plans, site plan, or tract.
Now, the original did not have project in it. So we should could be just going back to the original language as it was listed in the elements back in 2021.
And, and define project as original 2021 definition?
Yeah. And at that point, I don't, I don't know if the project, definition of project matters all that much.
Yeah, yeah.
Or it's even listed as a definition in the previous one.
I'm just ask, I'm going to ask a question that I'm really not sure. What if we just removed the wording project? And left it as a boundary of a lot?
I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's self decided at all.
I would like to avoid you all approving a document that then Chatham Park doesn't approve with. And then we just get back.
Gotcha.
But certainly there is an issue with there being this broad project definitions to where then they can very easily get eight density credits per unit because we're looking at a project rather than a site plan, right? I get that. Then that would require some more discussion with Chatham Park to tighten that language. I think we asking them to do an additional thousand units based on that density credit. That's probably a discussion that would take a little more.
I think the density credit is one of the, the benefits certainly. And then I think there, with all the other additional elements and the U D O and just some practical factors, there's some, there's physical limits on what that development would look like to increase that density. And if, if they were to go that much, it would look like, I think, what we've sort of described, we would want as more dense, high rise. I think just it would have to physically be that with all the other constraints and all the other elements and, and U D O and things like that. And open space requirements and, and all of those things. So I think all, you know, all of those things are still in place and if there is additional density that can be gained, I, I think it is a positive and as a trade off for affordable housing.
Well, Mayor, you may have, you do have greater knowledge of planning and development than I do. But I, I don't have the confidence that there wouldn't be a whole lot of more detached housing on tiny lots. I mean, you have a 60% increase in, in number of houses. And if that's what the market is demanding, I think that'll be responsive to the market. Rather than attending to the needs and concerns of this community that wants to preserve due shit, landscape, forests. So. I mean, they, they've given themselves permission to build those 13,200 units however they want. That says, that's my understanding of the reading here. Those additional units are not to be messed with. The town doesn't get to say how those are to be laid out. So that seems pretty clear to me.
What do you see that?
Um, I followed the word unit and that was how I came on that language. I do believe it was below the criteria, approximately criteria.
At section nineteen?
Yeah, so I'm looking for it now.
nineteen is what you're speaking of, I think. It just says that these, these density credit units are not subject to the affordable housing requirements. It doesn't say they're not subject to all the other parts of the elements and the other rules and regulations that the town has. So it's not uncredited license to build 13,000 units.
It does say, just after the criteria, it says density credits for A H U's and W H U's provided pursuant to settlement, maybe anywhere in Chatham Park and may be used for any type of dwelling.
Thank you. Any type of dwelling unit.
So they're allowed to use it for, you know, single family detached.
That's, that's the language. Okay. My apologies. Nevertheless, that's that's.
Yeah, but if you apply those units anywhere in Chatham Park, then Chatham Park in itself becomes more dense. So then there's more density within Chatham Park as a whole, rather than some other development coming and trying to meet those market needs on an additional piece of property outside of Chatham Park.
Yeah.
And it's just more sprawl.
We can hope that they wouldn't be detached dwelling units, but that's what we're left doing. It's just hoping that they won't be more detached units.
Just don't know where you float them. Like they'd have to be multifamily or condos. Multi-story something. Find that difficult to believe you're going to squeeze in another 13,000 units in Chatham Park? A development that's pretty much already mapped out.
And I think that's depending on too, how these, how these line up with the one mile from the project and what that is. I mean, because this is on the worst cases. I don't know, I don't want to say it's worst case scenario, but on the scenario of all 8,000 acres, is that criteria applying to all of those 8,000 acres is what you're, you're saying for that density bonus, right?
I think we're, at this point, only talking about the remaining 5,000 acres. And. Yeah.
What's the, what's the remaining five?
South Village. Within 5,000 acres.
Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry. I was thinking units in my head.
Yes, yeah, yeah. 5,000 acres remaining in the project that.
Units.
Yeah. The, the common project fulfills the North Village's affordable housing obligation. Is that correct?
It fills the obligation for Astoria.
Only Astoria?
Pretty sure.
Not for the rest outside of Astoria?
I don't think so. They've got units they're counting in. Landing, they've got units they're counting in. A few in the vineyards, I think, and some in Kirk Bradley's.
Yes.
Plus they've also got fire tower affordable housing project too. That's another eighty to eighty-four ish units, all 60% below. If memory serves.
All right. One thing is, we had no one sign up for the public hearing, so I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Commissioner Bonnet's second sector. Commissioner Vos, all those in favor?
Aye.
So other than the definition of, of project and sort of the scope of what that could accomplish, or a compass rather, and the, I guess the, the concern about affordable housing applying to the additional units. Are there other concerns that commissioners have? So we go back.
Can I mention this one thing? And I'm not sure, I'm off on this, but on page six from our old affordable housing element, number eighteen, it doesn't say anything regarding project that I read in it. Page six, it is?
No, that's right. In the original text.
Why do, do we have it added in here now? I mean, I'm just.
I think that that's pretty much. It's concerned, yeah.
Okay. Yes, and that's, okay.
Attorney Messick also mentioned the quid and the quote. Could we, could, could he explain that again?
You want seven and a half percent for housing units?
Hmm?
This is what they give.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure. The way it's written now? The way it's written now?
Yes.
Well, I was the intent of it originally, and this is revision of what was intended originally.
I see. Thank you.
You build it, we'll give you density credits, you can pay your S D F, or reimburse the S D F. And then S D Fs got really expensive. Now we're here.
We are very glad that you got those numbers down.
In this version of that. I don't know.
No, I wonder if we should make a motion to, uh, not making a motion right yet, but with this question regarding the project and have clarification on that, if maybe gets moved forward with some of this affordable housing, the element, and have clarification to be added into the, after we get some clarification from Chatham Park or the staff or.
Yeah.
I'm asking for.
I'm happy to just, I'm happy to just bring all the tables and we'll go back to Chatham Park this month or in the next week or two. And see if we can figure it out.
And is, what I guess that my concern is is this is the only concern we should be working on, then we should be able to move forward. That's correct?
Well, Chatham Park is very good in how they plan. So I would, I would imagine their, I would like to hear their reasoning for the language that was.
Added, correct, okay.
Cause I'm sure it has a purpose.
Can you provide us with that explanation?
Sure, yeah.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until.
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden. Second. Commissioner Bonnet, all those in favor? Say aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session, through into N C G S one forty three, three one eight, A five. Oh, moved. Thank you for the votes. Second?
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to table this?
Yes.
I make the motion to table this until...
Just say motion table.
Motion and table.
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Boden, second. Mr. Botts, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right.
Thank you, ladies.
Up next and last, we have a closed session. So I will take a motion to enter into closed session through into NCGS 143318, A5. So moved. Thank you for the votes. Second.
Second.
Farrell, all of them in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do it again.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldwin made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Bonnet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.